I'd like to ask Mr. Ferris if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Everybody stand.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our secretary do the roll call, please.
Chairman Cox.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Commissioner Yates.
Here.
And Commissioner Ferris.
Here.
For present, we have a quorum. We are missing Jim Sanders.
Jim Sanders is excused. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
I second.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Commissioner Yates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris.
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to the minutes for approval for that, we run into some problems and there's some concerns. At our last meeting, we left some things that are fairly ambiguous and it's hard to write a resolution on our track map that we discussed. And some of the examples, I'm just going to give you a couple of examples and give you a recommendation. For example, in our master plan, it talks about sump or pocket parks. It also talks about landscaping. We didn't have a landscaping plan. We didn't have things such as phasing. We didn't have hydraulic report, knowing what we're going to have to contain. And so there's a lot of things that weren't there. And so those were some of the conditions. As we talk, as you read the minutes, Commissioner Yates talked about he'd like to see the landscaping plan. Somebody else talked about it's important to see the phasing. But we didn't make any of those as a condition. So it sounds like that's what we wanted, but we didn't make it as part of the condition. So I would like to see that the minutes may be amended to say that more specific information is needed to get clarity for the planning commission's action, i.e. to be able to properly prepare conditions of resolution to approve TTM 7320. And those are some of the things that we need to kind of look at and clarify for our secretary so that she can write that amendment. And so I would propose that we approve the minutes with that amendment. With that change.
Mr. Chairman, I am, as staff, we have to indicate to you that modifying minutes is a historical document that you're modifying. The minutes reflect what was identified in the meeting and to modify those is to change what happened in the meeting, which did not change. So if you want to consider that items, those issues associated with that already approved map, then we would have to look at, you made my own request to modify, a request that the approved modify the resolution that was done. But to change the minutes is kind of like changing history. I don't think you can actually do that. I'd have to check with the city attorney, but I don't think you can modify the minutes unless it's something you're trying to clarify somebody said or didn't say.
That's all we're trying to do is to clarify. I'm actually asking for it to come back to the planning commission so that we can clarify each of those conditions in the resolution because there's no way to put those resolutions in there. So that's what I'm asking for because as the minutes read right now, is it's approved and there's no clarity for what they, for what we want them to put into the resolution. So I'm asking for it to come back.
The other thing that I would mention relative to that is that certainly on the landscaping and landscaping plan and so on, remember, the staff has been talking, looking for direction from the planning commission on whether you want to include that option or not within the plans, including the request for the pocket park issue, which is a significant landscaping requirement. And we're still waiting, we're still working, in fact, we have it as an item tonight for discussion to continue that discussion about the water ordinance versus the landscape plan issue and the dichotomy in those two documents. So certainly, I agree with you, Chairman, that that's not covered in the existing site plan. It was done on purpose. It was taken out because of that discrepancy we're talking about. So if you'd like to reconsider that, we're going to consider that tonight. If you'd like to go back and modify that condition in terms of the resolution, we could do that fairly easily. I believe on the other item, I believe, did we not make a, didn't I not suggest, and I believe the board approved a modification to the existing resolution that required the condition, I thought we did cover that second item.
The condition says the developer shall submit to the public works department the phasing maps and shall be further conditioned for every phase at discretion of public works department.
So what we said was that if he chooses to do a phasing map, he has to come back to the planning commission, each phase, and get new conditions to allow our city engineer to condition that phase. So I think we covered the phasing issue fairly well.
Well, if you actually read the minutes, the minutes says that it can go to the public works department or the planning commission. I think the intent of the planning commission was that the phasing comes back to us, that these things come back to us. And that's why I say there's some issues in the minutes that I don't think meets the intent that the commission wanted, and so I'd like to see this come back. And I'm not trying to change the minutes, okay, but the need of the resolution so it meets the intent of the commission to go forward so that can be written. I mean, there's a number of examples. You just talked about landscaping. Commissioner Rajaratnam, page 12, states that a landscape plan is required. Does it have to come back to the planning commission? Okay? Mr. Culper Engineer says yes, it is required to come back. Parsons staff, a planning can be recommended. Yates, like I see it, I see it coming back. But the resolution doesn't say that it will come back. So I'm not criticizing the minutes. I'm saying that they're unclear. I'd like to see this come back so that the conditions can meet what the commission's intent was.
I think I agree with Mr. Cox. I mean, we should be very clear on what we talked about. So if he decided that it has to come back to us, he should say the same way, I think, so.
And that's something that I think we agree as a staff, that we need to be very much more clear on what you're asking for in terms of a vote. You need to vote it. If you just talk about it and you don't bring it up as an action or a resolution or some sort of format to be voted on, it's just conversation, honestly. And so we need to have you, if you want something in, you know, action taken as an individual or, then you need to bring that as an action request to the, as a motion to the council, to the commission in order to vote for it. Otherwise, the minutes are going to reflect conversation. And so, you know, that's part of that, part of that issue. So we're getting through this, but that certainly is there. I think in terms of the issue you talked about, whether it comes to planning or engineering, it's still going to go back to site plan review. So that's what we're asking for. I mean, or, you know, phasing review, it's still got to go through the map process. So it's going to, if it comes to the planning commission, it's going to go directly to engineering for their review.
That's correct.
So on a phased map, you wouldn't, you know, there won't be a whole lot of issues. The same thing, we put in the conditions when we do the staff report and we say if a site plan, we have some, we have an example tonight's meeting where we had a site plan for a parcel map split. We haven't got there yet, so probably shouldn't get into it. But basically, that site plan is fantasy. It doesn't exist. That's just something that we, because we have a requirement in our code that you create a site plan, when you submit a map, it's there. But it's, the developer would tell you, and I would tell you, that they're not going to build what's on that map. So it's an example of why we, you know, the phasing, for example, we want to look at that and we need to condition so that whatever the decision is that they build, whatever they build, whether it's a restaurant that requires, you know, parking space for 75 feet or a commercial building, a retail store that requires one for 300 feet, we are able to condition to meet that change in what they're looking for. So we meet our goals. So anyway, I'm sorry to just divert, but I think you're right.
No, I think that's completely perfect. So if you have concerns, this is part of the training process. If you have concerns about a particular track map, if the engineer hasn't made it clear to you what he wants, as you get the staff report. So what I'm asking is if it comes back, go back to last month's information that was provided. Look at the minutes that we have here today to approve and say, oh yeah, what I should have done is when we made the recommendation of the resolution, that it has this, 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 and this. So if you have concerns, make those notes and say, I want the conditions to have this. And then that way, it's clear not only to the secretary, but our city and city planner and as well as the developer, what we're expecting of them.
And I would, just for purposes of legality, let's put it that way, we're not, you're not recommending that there be a change in the approval of the map, but rather clarity to the resolution conditions associated with the map. I don't, I don't want the developer to think that we're suddenly changed our action. We're just saying we want to make it more clear in the resolution is the conditions for the purposes of the developer to be able to develop the map properly. Okay.
Yeah, that's the way, the way I understood it is when we approved the resolution.
Your mic on?
Yes, okay. The way I understood it, when we approved the resolution, it was for the phasing to come back to the public works and that they would then present it to us. That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, that was my understanding, too.
Well, and Mr. Culpe acknowledges that in the minutes, but it's not in the resolution that each phase would come back, and so it was unclear.
Okay.
And so we make an assumption, and that's my point, is we need to make sure this is what we would like because, you know, you have a number of examples. We don't know what the phasing is. We don't know what the traffic flow is going to be. We don't know what, where the water collection's going to be. You could go down a number of lists and tell the site is completely developed, and so some things need to come back. And so that's, that's all it is. And we agreed with that, but it's just ambiguous and needs to be corrected for the resolution. Not changing the minutes, I just am requesting that it comes back. So I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes with a request that it comes back next meeting.
I second.
You need to propose a resolution.
I thought you meant, I'm sorry.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion for the addition of.
That we approve the minutes and bring back, it's, what is it? TTM 7320? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
I believe that's the right.
Yes.
Okay. The track map, the, that we considered last time. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Commissioner Yates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris.
Aye.
I'd like to point out, that's the longest approval of minutes I've seen in any meeting so far.
I knew it would be. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant the Brown Act, the planning commission may not take action on an item that does not appear on its agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section is for the, of the agenda is limited in total to one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide name and address. We will open the floor now to public comment of things that are not on the agenda. Well, that's easy. So we'll close that at 6:15 and move on to item seven. On item seven, it is a continued public hearing. This is being continued and Mr. Parsons has some information as the public notice had not gone out properly. And I'll let him explain further.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the, this item has, was first received from the department, into the department on December 18th of last year. It's been in process since December 18th in the planning process and has yet to have a public hearing. Unfortunately, we still have, it, last, last time we attempted to bring it to the planning commission, we had a problem with the paper who did not, if you remember, did not do the appropriate publication. So we were, we couldn't do the public hearing because of that. So we asked to have it continued at that time until we could get the public hearing duly noticed. We also required to do a 300-foot notice on this one, so for all the neighbors, 300 foot in area around it. So we then scheduled it for tonight's meeting. And in discussions with the developer and our city engineer, the determination has been that they'd like to continue this item again because of particular items that are not yet supplied or not yet available. The, what is interesting on this project for me is that it's simply, as you know, a parcel map where we're splitting a single piece of property into five parcels. So it's a TTM. And because of its location and the high development requirements associated with the surrounding public improvements, meaning the flood channel and the Bowman Highway, and their desire also to consider a bridge in the process, if you remember this particular development for access purposes, it's become a considerable public works project for Lauren and the developer to get all the information together. We'd like to have this item opened for discussion simply so that we can continue, ask you to continue it after that so that we do not have to do a new publication and a new 300-foot notice. If we continue the item to the next month's meeting, then we don't have to do those things. And to be honest, they're expensive and time consuming. So we'd like you to consider opening it for discussion, but essentially continue the item. And I believe the chairman has some comments he'd like to make, if I'm not incorrect on that concerning this. Again, the, one of the things that I'm most concerned with in this development, and we see this often, is our code, which is, I think, a glitch frankly in our code on a personal basis, requires that the developer submit a site plan for a parcel split. Now, in this case, the developer has five parcels they're trying to split. They have no idea who they're going to sell it to, when they're going to sell it, how they're going to sell it, and, you know, what development's actually going on there. So what they, because we require it as part of our plan, part of our document request, they created a fantasy site plan. They're willing to tell you that in an heartbeat. So we're, you know, the concern I have is we can't use the site plan really to do conditioning because it's, again, meaningless. I mean, from my perspective, the critical condition in, you'll see in my particular package, is that I ask that the, that when the building permits are requested, that we have the opportunity to do a second site plan review based on buildings that are being built rather than some imaginary site plan. So, and the reason I did that was because we think it's very important, just to give you an example, if you remember our code, if they build a restaurant, they're required to provide one parking space for 75 square feet. If they build a store, a regular commercial store, it's one for 300. So suddenly, we have a change in the parking lot structure, and that means that we have a whole bunch of differences in parking numbers. And depending on what they build, if they build an assembly area, it's worse than the parking. So my point is that that changes with time. So it's important that we know what they're building, so we know what the parking sizes are and the requirements and so on. In this case, so my concern is that in the, in the engineering side, you're going to see some requirements that Lauren has that is to some degree based on the site plan because he doesn't have anything else to work with. So we're kind of, we're trying to work through this. So I'm just letting you know why the extension of time and why it's taking so long. It is not the goal of, I'm sure, this commission or the city to have a simple lot split take six months to do. So that's where we are, and I appreciate it. And I think the chairman has comments. That's the end of my comments on it at this point.
So what I wanted to share with you is just a little bit of history in relationship to this that I want you to keep in mind, that may or may not be, well, it's not, not in the packet, but it is in the conditions of our engineer. And so I want you to be aware of it. This particular project came before the infrastructure committee. And Mr. Witten came in and several times and we discussed options and came to a compromise of what was required because on the Bowman Street, it has a different plan than, say, Drummond or Downs or something else as far as median widths and so on and so forth. So what I want to read to you is just a couple of paragraphs for you to keep in mind. Since this, yeah, my recommendation is also that we continue this, that we table it and continue it, is that the minutes say, Mr. Cox feels that Mr. Witten has met the conditions of what the Bowman specific plan committee, of the Bowman Plan specific committee had discussed for the area. And if the developer widens up with the Walmart existing four lane down to the box culvert and then does taper, widens the road access to the channel to make, make it two-car width with bike lane and pedestrian, he would be compatible with that. So we came down and in the motion, it doesn't, it doesn't specifically address that, but this is part of what we required of him. And I believe it's in the engineer's requirements as well. The motion is that, the motion is to approve Mr. Witten bringing back to the planning commission because instead of bringing it back to committee, we recommended that it come to the planning commission. Has new plans to show the widening of the roadway access and the channel, and the channel, and adding the bike path for the, for the site plan review was made to the planning commission and it was voted on. So the point was, is the original proposal was that it was just a two-lane bridge that he wanted to put across the channel. We asked him to have sidewalk and bike lane and actually make it wide enough that if people are passing from, because there's an R1 subdivision on that side, that if they wanted to walk over to Walmart or to Subway or something else, that they could do that. And he agreed to do that. There's also conditions in there for him to widen and then also improve Bowman, the street. If you, if you think of what is there, there are four lanes and then they taper down. Well, that four lane is supposed to be extended to the extent of his property and then tapered down past the old Walmart property line. So it's not very far, but that's what he had committed to, and there is some discussion on that. But that's, that's just history background that I want you to keep in mind when you do read the engineer's report. Why are we asking this? Because that actually came from committee. So my recommendation is, too, that we table this and continue it for another time. And if I have a second.
I so move.
Second.
Oh, is it here? No, that's, that's good.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Commissioner Yates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to number eight, public hearing variance, VAR 17-1. A request for a variance from a five-foot side setback for a metal carport under construction at 313 North Balsam Street in an R1 zone. I now open this public hearing to staff report.
Excuse me, I'm trying to get to the section on this on the slides.
You were so entertained by my.
Yes, absolutely.
Other retort.
Yes, absolutely. And slow on this, because we didn't go through this item, so we don't have all these slides that we did. Okay, here we go. Yes, this item is a variance request for a, due to a five-foot setback that was, that is in the city code for a, in this case, a metal carport, which was located at, on Balsam. And the property is, as you see in the, in the slide in front of you, and the public can see, is located on Balsam and is one of the residential lots located there. The, if I get my slides to work. One of the, one of the problems, to be very honest, that caused this issue initially and is a problem that, and one of the reasons we're submitting it to the, to the planning commission for action in this case, is because when the applicant, which is here today, by the way, and be able to answer questions, submitted a site plan, this was the site plan they submitted, and you'll note on the upper left-hand corner of the plan, it's a yellow piece of paper, so the stamp doesn't look very good, is a approval stamp that was stamped by our building department when it submitted, not our planning department, or a building apartment, which unfortunately indicates that it meets all building codes. Well, the, you, we have a problem because we can't expect the develop, the owner of the property, who's not obviously an experienced builder and planning person, to know that that is not the stamp of the planning department. So they went forward with the project and actually got building permits and constructed the project. The problem, of course, as you can see, is, is part of the planning commission, this site plan is wholly unacceptable and should have been sent to planning because you'll notice there's no property lines or any other thing that indicates anything that would tell us setbacks and other conditions we need to have. So unfortunately, it went to building and just stayed in building until we got to the point where one of the, we received a complaint or concern, actually, from one of the, from a neighbor relative to the setback. This is the building plan. It's, of course, a metal structure and it's actually, the structure they built is actually the one up at the corner on the left. Again, you notice the stamp. And permits were issued and we're there. What the, the issue is, as you can see in this drawing, is the structure is obviously not five feet from the fence line. It's in fact, a few inches from the fence line. And so the, the concern that this neighbor has that you're looking at to the left is that this site, this structure is actually, has several issues, which I'm sure they will be able to voice themselves. But one of the things the staff sees is that this structure is running water off of one property onto another. And so we need to figure out a way to, to correct that. The, normally, the five-foot setback would probably be exactly where that shed is, but this building already exists and was permitted by our building department, which is the other issue here. Certainly not the only carport that exists in town. This particular, to be honest, this particular resident made the effort to come in and ask for the appropriate plans and so on. That's why they're sitting here. If they hadn't, we have several that were built and never came to building. So they exist, as you know, all over the neighborhoods. The issue, of course, is that certainly we would have been able to condition them for that because you can see that there is certainly enough space for the five-foot setback and still have the car in there if they were told at the beginning of the process to do that. So we're kind of in this catch-22 situation now in which they have built the property, duly did their job, did what they needed to, but in fact, were misdirected by, at the time, by our building counter and built it to the specifications. Now, one of the issues the building had was the, that's hung it up also, is the, just so you know, is that the foundations had to be redone and redone, which I believe they have been, but, and inspection's been done on those to, to make the building, meet our building code. So they've tried to meet the building code. The only issue we have is this, this issue on the side. The, this is another photograph from the, the person who's next door, who has the concern. And as you can see, the, the actual metal structure extends essentially almost over the fence line. And certainly, water would be an issue that needs to be addressed if nothing else. Then this is, again, you can see this, here's the fence, it's a metal chain link fence, and here's the structure against that. So these are some photos for you to look at. At this point in time, I would suggest, if the council would like, they could answer questions, ask questions of me and perhaps should have a public comment period for both. We have both the individual who filed for the application and the variance and the person who is objecting to the issuance of the variance. And I would like to point out, as you make the decision, the code requires that you find, and we put it in the staff report, five findings, and you need to find, essentially make all of those findings in order to either approve, if you approve the variance, okay? And you can also approve the variance with conditions if you. And you can also approve the variance with conditions if you choose to want to do that. But we do need to make those findings in order to have, to meet the code requirements. So with that, I can answer questions or I'll turn it back to the chairman for a public comment if he'd like, from the applicant and the person concerned.
Does the commission want to discuss, or would you like to hear from the applicant? Let's turn it over to the public for public comment.
Which, when would you like to go first?
It doesn't matter. Whoever wants to come up and talk to us first, be sure and give us your name and address, please. Take it back one slide.
Sure, so you can see the structure.
My name is Nella Von Jeglem, and I live at three oh five Balsam Street, and I'm representing applicant. There's a language issue sometimes, and so I thought it would be easier if I came and could explain what was happening. Like it was reported, the applicant in good faith came to the city, brought in a plan, got it stamped, approved, went about building what they had petitioned to do, and did not realize that there was a problem with their application because they're not familiar with what the rules are. And when it went to the counter, and when I first became aware of the issue, the carport was already up, and I had gone down to ask her, because it's very nice looking and I was thinking I would like to have something like that for my motorhome, and I wanted to find out where it came from. And that's when she was telling me that there was an issue and they stopped them and they were in trouble. So the first thing I asked her, I said, "Well, show me what you took to the city." And for those of you that may not know, I was chairman of the planning commission at one time, and I have an extensive planning background, and so I understand the language. I speak the language. So she showed me what her application was, and I went, "Well, this should never have been approved because it's not complete." I said, "There's no property lines, there's no detail. You don't know where the property lines are, there's no setback, there's no information, just that you're building a carport." So I said, "I think, you know, you didn't go out of your way to do anything wrong, you were trying to do the right thing, and now you're caught in the middle. And I think it should be our responsibility to treat someone that came in good faith with an understanding that there was no malice of any sort. And it's not an eyesore, and it's not a bad improvement to the area, it's actually very complimentary to the way things look. And I do have a little bit of an issue with the fact that they're worried about the water getting into the neighbor's property. There is six or eight inches between where the uprights for the carport are and the metal fence, the chain-link fence for the other property. And then there's a concrete, what do you call it, base, that's more than a foot wide that runs the whole length of it. And there is, the way that it's designed, it comes down, it curves and comes straight down. There's no angle at all coming off the top to create a flow of the water to go at an angle into somebody's yard, it's just going to come right straight down. And when we had all of the rains that we had in the last month, the property owner was curious about how it was going to work, and she went out there and said it was just coming right straight down into the driveway, wasn't going anywhere else. So I don't think that that's an issue. As much rain as we get here, I don't think that it's going to be a great issue. But I just did want to tell you that the applicant did everything in good faith and tried to follow all the steps and got kind of not due to anything that they did. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Name and address?
Yes, Vicki Siegel, three oh nine Balsam Street. I live, that's my property, that that is adjoining. I know that it's your job to follow the letter of the law this evening, and I know that you're going to do exactly that. There's been expert counsel with the applicant, and my expert counsel is my nephew, who's an attorney in L.A., and so he had his staff research, the municipal code in Ridgecrest, and also Kern County, and he said that the variance, and you fellows know this, is justified only if special conditions exist on a lot that create a hardship, making it too difficult to comply with the code's normal requirements. Well, that driveway is perfectly acceptable for a five-foot setback on either side, so it doesn't meet that requirement. And also, approval of variance must not result in a public health or safety hazard or limit the adjoining property owner's enjoyment of their property. And I can tell you 150% that that is like looking at the hull of an ocean liner on my entire backyard, from every single window, my office, my bathroom, my bedroom, and my kitchen, that have glass doors. That is having a real effect on my enjoyment of my yard. And also, I do feel that it's going to put out a lot of heat, I mean, it's 100 degrees plus for six months. That 77-foot-long structure is going to throw a lot of heat onto my property. I have serious health issues, I must use air conditioning, and I have two-window air conditioners cool my house. And those extra degrees are going to affect me. So that's what I have to say on those points because they are not able to cover those five points legally. It's just not going to happen with the structure the way it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Anybody else who would like to address the commission? Commissioner comments?
Gary, can you walk us through that process when somebody comes in to have something like this built? Because I understand her confusion when she comes in to have this approved, it's stamped, it's approved. I could see how that'd be fairly misleading, that here we go.
Yes, in this case, what happened, and we've tried to make corrections, both the building department and planning are trying to make it better in the future, so I'll just let you know. But the sins of the past in this case is that the, during our building, a building front desk individual decided, or stamped the site plan with the building stamp, primarily thinking that it was receiving. I mean, she does that to receive the plans in. Unfortunately, the stamp says approved on it. And so, and to be honest with you, it never hit the planning department because it went to building and it never got to us. The time we found out about the issue from a planning standpoint, that there was an issue, was when we had a complaint from the adjoining property owner concerned about the project. And so we went to check it out, and sure enough, the site plan never was approved by planning. It went straight to building, they started construction, they issued building permits, started construction, and essentially, the carport was up, about three-quarters of it to five-eighths of it was up, if more, already done by the time we were made aware of the fact that there was an issue to talk to the property owner about. And so, you know, in the process, we did, it was, the property owner had really no knowledge that there wasn't approval of the site plan. And so we've changed, to answer your question though, we've changed the process so there's a specific site plan stamp now, or a planning stamp that goes on the site plan, separate from the building plan, so we don't have that problem, hopefully. And it's just, it's unfortunate because, to be honest about it, I don't believe that the property could have any idea that there was a problem on the site plan when they submitted it to us. It just wasn't there.
So let me share some thoughts, and this isn't a decision pro or con, it's just some thoughts. I have a number of these buildings, and they're designed to flow forward or back, if you look at the ribbing on it. There is going to be some water that's going to come down the side, but not a lot, that's how they're designed. They're a white roof, they don't, I have my RV underneath one, too, and it actually makes the property cooler, not hotter, it actually reflects rather than attracts. There's a number of things. My concern here initially was water and water flow, just as we have to consider onsite sumps, you know, for maintaining their water, same thing, that it doesn't become a problem for the neighbor. Now, having said that, if you look at the fence to the top of the building here, my son, and I'm just using this as an example, he built a stick RV garage that's 16 feet high, and that's the maximum which the building code will allow. And this is not, this is probably, if I asked the owner, maximum of 10 or 12? Isn't it? Okay? And his neighbor was frustrated with the lack of view, and if this building was moved five feet over, it would not change the view. And that's my concern, if we condition that and say we push that over five feet. Now, also with these buildings, they come in specific sizes. So if she ordered it, she couldn't have ordered it to that particular width because they come in specific widths. I believe that the homeowner has met the good faith in the aspect of coming down and asking the city's permission. So I think there's a number of things to consider here, as well as the neighbor's concerns. But I think the health issue or heat issue, I don't think that that's relevant, and I don't think that the water issue is relevant. I think that if we look at whether or not it obstructs view or the reasonable happiness use of their home, go back another slide, Gary, please.
Sure.
One more, where it shows the side of the fence from their property.
Should I get the thing to work? Is it going here?
Anyway, it was, maybe it's forward, I'm sorry.
It's forward, okay.
So the only thing that I would like the commissioners to consider is that this is a six-foot fence, I'm sure, or a five-foot. And so we're extending up another three foot. And so if that was moved over five foot, would that view be any different? Okay? Now, I think that there was a mistake made, and yes, there is a five-foot setback, but that five-foot setback is designed for fire access. Okay? If you have a building right to the property line, and it's a commercial building, then it's built accordingly so that you have fire breaks. But most of the time, it's for fire access, so that the fire can get from front to back and accessible. This is open in the back, open in the front, it does not create a fire hazard, does not create access hazard. Would I consider a variance in every building in the city? I wouldn't consider that. But I think that in good faith, they came to the city and asked for permission, and I think you could go down and in the specific language of each and every one of the five things, you could make an interpretation that it met those requirements. But as the previous person that spoke, Vicki spoke, you know, she has some concerns. I'm sad that we've got neighbors at odds with each other over something like this because that's never pleasant. But I think that that is information, water, why do we have a five-foot setback, a number of those things when we talk about ordinances, why are they there in your consideration? Commissioner comments?
I was going to ask, Gary, has this ever happened before where someone came in for a permit and there was a confusion with a stamp?
The answer is we've not, fortunately, at least in my time, we've not had a situation like this happen. There has been, we researched to see whether variances have been granted for the five-foot setback issue in the past, and we have found other planning commissions have granted, primarily though, they were wood structures that were constructed, and they were primarily garages, not carports. But there were one or two that we found, so they're, you know, but that's, we, again, my only, the only concern, truthfully, staff, that was presented to me that we had some concern with, and we voiced that to you earlier, was the water runoff, which of course is correct in the sense, but the reality is that the basic rules that I've been told work is that you don't pour water on a neighborhood's, on a neighbor's property, you just, you don't have runoff to do that, regardless of the amount, doesn't specify the amounts, this is not that. So that is a concern, but, you know, as far as that goes, really, the staff in this case is leaving this decision up to you guys. We don't have any real recommendation one way or another on it.
Is this something that we should mitigate here or discuss about how we can try to appease both parties, or is this just-
You can do a variance with a-
Condition?
Condition on it. So you could have a variance that meets the party application and then have a condition that requires, that hopefully meets some of the neighbor's concerns, if you can figure that one out.
Well, that's the only reason I said. Truthfully, if we took this building, and I mean, even if you take number one, that talks about resulting in a practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship, they got approval from the building department, right or wrong, they got an approval. They put it up. It would be a physical hardship, it'd cost them a bunch of money. If we moved it back five foot, it would not alleviate the view. Okay? It's a white roof, it doesn't have the heat, the runoff is on their property, as was stated, without inspecting the property. Personally, I have to take her word for it that it's five to six inches off the property line, so any runoff is dripping on her property. That's pretty hard to guess where the water, you know, a little bit of water's going because if it's raining, everybody's wet. But if it's a large flow, but the buildings are designed to flow back or forward, and I would assume that they would have designed it towards the street. And so you can go through these things, and so unless you have any other particular questions, anything that the city engineer wants to offer to this? How did I know? No.
Well, I just might mention that as a matter of just practice, the building department does take a look at what the county has approved for a building plan. In this case, the submittal had both the supposed site plan as well as the construction drawings, and the county, once they have approved that plan, will stamp their, put their stamp on that plan. And then when the plan comes to us, as a matter of recording when it has been received by the city, each plan is stamped as a matter of practice to make sure that each of those submittal drawings are a part of that approved package that is going out into the field to be constructed. In this particular case, it's true, the approval stamp was misinterpreted as an approval of a site plan, when it's really just a matter of practice when we get an approved plan set from the county. That's all they do is approve the structure. For us to also stamp as a matter of our record that the city has received and that it bears the city stamp that it also is, has been approved. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it is a matter of practice. Now, just like Gary said, we are taking steps to differentiate a site plan from the building plans that the county has approved, so we are taking care of that issue.
Thank you. So one other comment that I would give to you, you asked about conditions, and there have been some conditions put on some of these throughout the city. So one of the conditions that I've seen before is that if we approve the variance, that the condition is if the property is ever sold, the structure comes down because it does not meet the code. Okay? You also need to understand this is a temporary building, not a permanent building. It can be unbolted and moved. And so we can approve a variance as is and with no conditions, we can add a condition that should the property ever be sold, that that building needs to come down because the variance is only conditional upon the life of the- We can add a condition that should the property ever be sold, that that building needs to come down because the variance is only conditional upon the life of the homeowner. Any other comments or questions?
Can we put a condition on it, even though it's, right or wrong, it's rightfully got the permit? Can we put a condition on that?
Yes, because we're the ones that are offering a variance.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Parsons, would it have been...
Speaking to the mic, please.
Would it have been approved? I mean, it was approved by the building department by mistake. Would it have been approved by you?
Planning department, the site plan that was submitted? No, ma'am. It would have to be modified because the site plan doesn't show proper, as was addressed even by the applicant, the site plan does not have property lines, doesn't indicate setback requirements or any of that stuff. So if it had come to the planning department, we would have required them to do the five-foot setback, and they would have had to build to that setback, to be honest.
Yeah, that's my interpretation, yeah.
It just never got to us. It never got to us.
And that's what my nephew said, too. You're going to make your decisions by what you think is right and what the law appears to for yourselves. But what's really interesting, I'll just say, is this isn't the primary home of these people. Their primary home is in Victorville, their family home. They're not here all the time. It's a place for Mr. Roses to hang his hat during the week. So it's interesting that they built a 77-foot carport when one car or no car is there 50% of the time. And, you know, that's just an aside, that this is what I will be dealing with if that's what you decide. That's not, doesn't quite make sense, you know?
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment?
The applicant would like to clarify that her husband works on the base and lives in that house all the time. She's the one that comes and goes to other properties, but he is always there. Thank you.
Commissioner comments? Any more questions?
I have a couple of questions on the resolution. I don't know if you are going to pass this or not, but the resolution says five-feet-side yard setback to a two-feet-side yard setback. So is that true? Does it have a two feet?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Go to the resolution, please.
Yeah, go to the resolution. One second. Is there a...
Page five, just right after the picture of the carport, all the way into that. Probably five pages from the back. Says on March, but it says findings on March 20th, 2017, the planning commission duly and regularly received requests for variance from a five-foot setback to a two-foot setback yard side setback for a garage under construction at 313. So I think that's more background information than a resolution.
It's a resolution, right?
Yeah, it's a background, it's a whereas kind of situation, but the two-yard setback, two-foot setback on the side yard from the garage, there is, I'm not sure, the staff person that wrote that, Paul, can you come up and explain what you were trying to say there, please? Since you wrote that particular item. I'm sorry, Paul is our finding tech and helped us write this particular. So I'm trying to figure out what he's actually trying to say here, too.
And we just want to be very clear in what you're saying.
We're looking at this paragraph right here, front paragraph, that talks about the two-foot setback. I'm not sure what you're referring to when you say two-foot.
Well, I would assume that they offered a variance as close as two feet in research.
I would guess.
I think that's just background, that's not part of the resolution.
I apologize, we just, I'm just trying, you caught me off-guard there a little bit. Okay, that's, I appreciate it, thank you. It wasn't your, okay. The, I would suggest that on the findings, we would simply take off, it would just say the variance for the five-foot, five-foot side yard setback. And delete the two-side yard setback from the garage under construction. It's not really the garage, it's a carport. And change that to carport and take off the two-foot side back. So I would just eliminate that from two-foots to construction, just that one section, to make it more clear, because that's what we're trying to do. And I apologize to staff that didn't catch that.
So is this signed off, Gary? I mean, does it need to be signed off by somebody once it is completed, or?
There, I believe, I believe it's, it has not been final, so construction is, building is still going through the construction process, has to be final. As I mentioned earlier, there was a, there was a footing and construction issue that I believe is, they're doing inspection on or finalizing. It may be final, and we're not aware of it, but we haven't seen the final from a senior staff. And, okay, as of this morning, it had not been. So it still has to be final.
Okay.
This is simply a request for the setback, not the building. We're not suggesting that any building codes be buried or anything else. We're just talking about the five-foot setback here on the one side. Okay?
And on the conditional approvals, second, the note says, these conditions must be met within six months. So what are we talking here? What conditions are we talking here?
That's just standard language. We put that in every document that allows the applicant time to correct. Obviously, in this case, since it's a variance, they won't have to correct the variance. The variance will give them the ability, they will be in compliance after you agree to the, on this particular condition, agree to the resolution, they will be automatically in compliance. So that, again, that's the standard language, stick and everything, but it is not really that applicable in this case.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
Can the neighbors work out any solution, do you think? Do we want to ask them?
Well, you know, I don't know that that's for us to arbitrate, but the reality is, is one are going to be unhappy that it's there, and the other one's going to have a financial hardship if we ask them to take it out. So there's going to be a problem either way, and I don't think it's for us to arbitrate. I think it's whether or not we've met, we can reasonably argue that the five conditions have been met. And so that's the only reason that I suggested, so I would throw out that we approve the variance of the building with the condition that if the bill, if the property is sold, that the building comes down. If I have a second, or if I don't, that's fine.
So we have, just to be clear for the staff, we have a motion on the floor, as I understand it, that we approve, that you approve the variance with that, I'd like to have that one section removed, the two-foot through that, number one. And number two, that there's an addition to this conditions that should the building be sold, should the house be sold, the recommendation is that the variance be then terminated and the building be subject to demolition, correct?
Yeah, take it down. It's not really, it's a temporary building, it can be unbolted.
Okay.
Take it down or whatever.
That's kind of...
Yes, so that the new owner is going to have to, if they want to do something like this, you're going to have to meet the five-foot requirement.
Are you clear? Clear on that, I have a second here, okay.
I'm sorry. Do we have a second, or do we have an alternative? Yes, Mr. Col...
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
As staff, I would recommend that there be some consideration for a recorded document that would travel with the parcel, and that it'd be an administration issue that we would not know of the sale of that property, and not know if the, if that encumbrance has been taken care of. I would suggest that if that is indeed the will of the commission, that you have a binding document that's recorded and would show as an encumbrance on the property.
I think that's a good recommendation. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have a second, or do we have a different proposal?
I second with the changes of the wording in the variance and the condition with record on file for the city upon the sale of the property.
Recorded document. I do have a question before we vote on that, please. Is this something that we would draw up and have recorded? Or would we require them to record it? Or would we put the specific language in it and have them record it, and they could bring that at the time they get their final on their permit?
Yes, prior to final, we would request that they prepare the document for our review to ensure that indeed is recorded as an encumbrance on the property. And require that a copy from the recorder's office be submitted to the city such that it could go in the address file, such that we have record of its recordation as well as, and it would show up on a title report.
Okay. Did you get all that, Heather?
I just want to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
I want the neighbors to be aware, in case this is passed, that they have a right to appeal to the city council.
And be sure and be mindful of that, that it's 10 days. And the city council may not have you on the agenda in 10 days, but you have 10 days if you want to appeal it to the city council.
Does that mean?
Yes. Okay.
Either one could be.
Where are the forms for that?
You would go to approach the city clerk on that, and she would range for that.
So be mindful for both of you, it'd be the same, same argument that you've presented here, if they choose to appeal this to the city council, so that they can take into consideration, city council will be given the minutes of our discussion, the information that was provided. And so those are your options, so that you don't feel like you're just saddled, or you can live with the decision of the planning commission. And so I encourage you to be aware of what your rights are. What's that?
Do we have to vote, please?
We have to vote. We've had a first and a second, so she has to do a roll call for that to be a resolution for the variance.
Would you like the, would you like the secretary to...
I have a question first. If this property's encumbered now, shouldn't that, do we have to, you know, let her know that, and is she okay with that? If we're encumbering this property with that term, if the property is sold, I don't know that I would necessarily want an encumbrance on my property, and maybe that is a sticking point for her. So should we ask her that?
No, I don't think that's appropriate. The reality is we either require the five-foot or we don't.
Okay.
And so the condition is if we're going to allow the five-foot, we either say, oh, you know what, it's all good. Or we actually put a condition so that the neighbor doesn't have to live with it forever in that condition, you know? But yet I don't want to create an undue hardship as well. And so it's not what is, they've expressed what they would like, so we've got opposing points of view here. So it's up to us to either make a decision or kick it up to the council.
By the way, just for reference, before we, as part of the motion, we need to identify that we, the planning commission does find the five findings, does make the five findings in the, just clarity. It does say so in the resolution, but I want to make sure we're clear, because that's the requirement of the code. So we can go from there, and our mayor is coming up for comments, so I'll shut up.
Peggy Breeden, but not responding as mayor. Peggy Breeden, citizen, okay? Is there some condition acknowledging the fact that there was less than perfect action from the city? Is there some condition under which it can be modified? Can it be raised a little bit and pushed in? Can it be pushed down? And is there some sort of, I don't know how these are constructed, but it seems to me there must be some way to give some resolution to both sides and see how it can be done. Who's going to pay for that? I have no idea. I'm not Solomon. But it seems there has to be some way that we can find a way to deal with the concerns and the realities that it was not done perfectly by us. And I don't know that that creates a liability for us, and I don't want to suggest it does because I have no idea. But I do, as a person who would live with that and the person who constructed it, there's good on both sides. Nobody is an error. They did what they thought was right. I can understand having to live with it, too. And so is there any sort of physical way this can be changed? That's all I'm asking, not as the mayor, please don't think, I'm Peggy Breeden, citizen.
So let me, let me answer your question. The bows are constructed in a way to meet a certain distance apart. They can't be changed. If they did a custom building and brought it in five-foot, they could. I would, I would guess, knowing what some of my buildings cost, the length of this building, you're probably spent $25,000 or more for that building. And so it would have to be rebuilt. And so that would be their loss is the total cost of that. And so that's the concern that I have. But there's no way to reconstruct that building, it'd have to come down, new bows built. They could reuse the sheet metal, but if the new bows were built, they would probably incur $10,000 to $15,000 in cost.
Okay, we can't re-undo what was done, so I accept that.
And so also with the, with the building department, yeah, there was probably, there was, not probably, there was some mistakes made, but I think what we're trying to do here is to try and rectify a problem that was an oversight.
I don't think the city did it on purpose.
And there is consequences, there is consequences of a bad action, and all of us should know that, that there's consequences, because they're, they're living with it, and they've paid for it. And so we need to be more diligent in what we're approving, what we're not approving, and what we're receiving as kind of a site plan, because as our engineer talked about, there are no property lines, but it does show how far it's back and so on and so forth relative to the...
Well, there's errors on everybody's part.
Yeah.
I'm not saying anybody was perfect in this whole thing. I'm just asking.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second?
You have a...
Oh, yes, go ahead, sir.
I just want, I would like to bring up something that I happened to notice in the picture. I'm an outsider in this situation.
Sure.
If you go back to the picture of the fence and the foundation on her side, can you go back to that picture?
See if I can do that. This one here?
No, the next one. Keep going, you'll see which one. No.
It's the other way.
The other way, yeah.
Same thing I did before.
Okay, stop. If you look at the foundation of the fence, forward to a degree, all the way to the street, that foundation is under the fence. This year, because of the heavy rains, which is not a...
Speaking to the mic, sir, because the public on TV cannot hear you.
I'm looking at the picture and not looking at, okay. So what I'm looking at there, if you look at the picture, you can see where the erosion of the foundation of the fence, where the concrete goes all the way to the back. Now, you can see a washout there, and you can see some, and it's only mostly where the building is, close to the fence. So the amount of water coming over sometimes can be, because I have seen these buildings in the heavy rains this year, and the amount of water coming over sometimes does not come straight down. It actually will flow out. Because if you notice the ridges, the water hits the ridges and causes a splatter. So that's another issue. But I'm just trying to bring to the attention that why is there a washout now, and in the past, there was none? That's all I like to bring up.
Sir, can I ask you to present your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm, I live in the county. My name is John Peroska. I live at 1626 Everett Street, Bridgecrest, California. And so what I'm just, I'm just bringing to your attention only because of the picture. Thank you.
So if we were, if we were truthful, and that is a good observation, but if we're truthful, if you look at the grass that's dead, that undermining's been going on for a long time, not since February.
This year, though, this year, remember, the wash would kill the grass, because I have to... have that same problem, because of the, the rain.
The, the rain was before the structure was put up. The washout occurred prior to the structure being put in.
No, I disagree that wasn't rain.
Well, I think, I think there are valid points, so.
Thank you.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratna?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you to all of you. Okay, moving on to item nine, discussion and other action items, water and landscaping ordinance. Before we, before we jump into that, one of the suggestions I was gonna have under Commissioner's comments is, we're supposed to, by ordinance, have an annual review of the master plan, and this is part of the master plan, is that maybe we prepare, because some of the revisions and changes in the master plan, I know that our engineer has some, some thoughts and changes that we might do, as well as discussing the water and landscape ordinance. So I'm wondering if that's something that staff wants to handle now, or part of, we're supposed to do it annually. Our last one was in January.
The, this is a ordinance discussion, and what you're suggesting is a site, is a, is the general plan issue, so they're, they're actually different. So I would suggest we handle this issue first, and then come back in your comments. And if you want to take up the, the general plan review issue, we can do that for agenda items for next time. It's just my recommendation. You can do anything you like.
That's fine. So staff report?
Yes, this again is the discussion we had, actually, part of what we had earlier, I mentioned, is we still, staff's looking for direction, because we have a water and landscape ordinance that the city has, and yet we have a, also a water conservation ordinance. They seem, to the staff at least, somewhat opposing each other. In other words, there's, there, because even though, we're gonna see here, if I go through some of the pictures we have here, if I can get this thing to work, we're looking at zero scape examples, this by the way is not local, but is example, we're still, as you can see, utilizing water. We have landscape, you know, regardless of zero scape or whether it's not zero scape. The question is, is that something that the city wants to encourage under the landscape ordinance issue? And certainly, by the way, it, it goes beyond this to, we just had earlier a discussion about pocket parks. This obviously doesn't reflect the parking park. But zero scape is still a water consumption item, minimized, I agree, but, and, and certainly there. So the key here to the staff is, do you want to give, we're looking for direction from this, this commission, as to whether we reinstall and re, put in place all of the, the requirements we've had in, in all of our, our site plans, reviews, and all of our maps and so on, that identifies landscape plans. Obviously, if you ask for a landscape plan, regardless, you're asking for landscaping one way or another. And whether it's zero scape or not, it's a water, water issue. So we're just looking for direction as to how the planning commission wants us to move forward. And you saw an example where we didn't include, in the last map, we didn't include landscaping, because we took the, the water conservation course. If you don't want us to do that, we, we want direction. So, and zero scaping obviously is, you know, goes from here, where you can see on the left, what I consider to be a very, very minimal water use, because it's almost all rock, a few very small plants, to landscapings that are, again, minimal, I like, that are very minimal and use very little land, plants, to ones that are very much more, like the one in the corner up here on the right side of your drawing, which have considerable number of plants. Small water users, but still a considerable number of plants. Really, the difference in zero scape, in a great sense, is the turf issue, obviously is a big issue within zero scape, non-utilizing that. In fact, the, 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 the water district has a, you know, grass, money for grass. So this, this is the question, I guess, the staff's looking for, and we're looking for direction from you guys, which way you want to go. If you want to include the, the landscaping, you know, plans, and all the other things that go with that, we're there with you, we'll do that, where we'll start requiring them of all, all of the applications again. If you want to stick with the, the water, heavy water conservation, and they have no zero scape, or not require, we're not saying they can't put zero scape in, and they can't put landscaping in, and certainly we'll look at them if they submit it to us. But we're not going out and asking for it, if you understand the difference there. So that's, that's why the staff is very interested in getting some direction from you.
Mike?
Go ahead.
My comment on this is, I think since water is very sensitive and debatable issue, whatever we do, whatever revisions we make, should not contradict with what, what water district is doing. So they have ordinances 98, 99, and 100, which specify how the landscape needs to be. So I think we should strictly follow those guidelines. So that's what I think, though.
So what I was gonna add to that, I think if we change and ask for nothing, then we might not even get zero scape, or we may not even get drought tolerant, because they'll do whatever they want. I think that we should have a landscaping plan. I think that it should come for us to look at and approve. I don't want to live in a community that's asphalt, concrete, and dirt. And I think a number of these are very attractive and, and very well done, and yes, they are water consumption. They are. But I would ask the city council, I would ask the community, if we do everything we can to conserve, do you want to live in a city that's concrete sidewalks, dirt, and asphalt streets, and that's it? Is that what you want? And for me, that's not what I want. I would like to have a landscaping plan, require a landscaping plan, and make sure that we have some oversight, that it meets the drought tolerant and the conditions that, that Solomon talks about, that the, the water district is set forth. That way, we're in harmony, rather than, well, you know, we'll look at it, but we're not gonna require it, but yet we have no oversight of it. And I don't find that acceptable either. So that's my thoughts.
Yeah, and, and to be honest, I should clarify, the staff does require that they meet, if they put plants in or landscaping, they meet the, they utilize the plant selection of the water district and utilize the, our current water conservation requirements, which essentially are dealing with the, as well as the water district. So we're not saying, go and do whatever you want. We're just simply saying that if you, we're not asking for a plan, we're simply saying, at this point, and again, if you want the plan, which has certainly been suggested, staff has no problem, we'll put that back into the system and start doing that for all of our applicants. We just want what your, what your desire is. But we are, we are requiring that they meet the water, current water district's requirements and the, at minimum, and the city's water, water conservation ordinance as well. We're just not asking them to submit us a formal plan at this point normally. So if they put plants in, they gotta put them in per the, those two ordinances. So we're, we're definitely not going to ignore that, but we're not asking for a formal plan at this point. But, you know, we're open to, again, it's in, we have ordinances to do either one, so we can do either way, but I'm just pointing that out. They're contradictory ordinances, so if we do one, we break the other. If we do the other one, we do the other, so.
Be mindful of one more thing, especially on commercial development. What is coming, in most cases, they're requiring it now anyway, but it, I don't believe, and Lauren can correct me, is that the building code is requiring a separate water meter for landscaping. Now, there's two reasons for that, because we're taxed on our taxes for sewer fees based on our water consumption. They had talked about it for residents, and we had talked, said no, but I think on commercial buildings, they are doing that. If we, if we found extreme problems to where it could be shut off, it's not requiring the building and the sanitary needs of the building to be shut off. And, and so there's, there's options there that, that are happening, and we'll see that extend into the building codes in the near future. But just, just be mindful of that, so. Commissioner comments?
Well, we, we've arrived at this place because of the, the drought. Basically, the drought that we were in as a state. State law rolled down to local water departments and enforced, enforces the water conservation. And we're trying to take that in to concern according to our ordinances. My question is, are we still, and I know we haven't received a report yet, but are we still, as a state, in a drought?
Governor Brown has not relieved that requirement yet, no?
He has not relieved it, and not anywhere close to doing so.
My understanding is that this particular basin, which is specific, is still in a critical overdraft, so.
Okay.
Whether we're in a drought or not is, is secondary to the fact that the, the basin's in overdraft. And the GSA that's been formed, and the, the effort here is to try to get us balanced, so that our input, our, our recharge is the same as our outgo. Till we get that accomplished, we're in overdraft, so there is a critical need for water. The, you know, and, and the reason I'm so concerned with this, frankly, is the other hat I wear, which is the ED side, economic development side, because as we add more houses, we add more businesses, we're going to increase the use of water. And frankly, I would like to see us have water for businesses and houses before I frankly see, and do zero scape, or minimal zero scape, before I see us spending water on grass and other luxuries, if you want to look at it that way, because we're gonna need the water for both, until we get the problem solved. And the GSA, and the council, and a lot of people are spending a lot of time, a lot of resources, political and resources, to get, to try to get that done. So I just don't want this commission going around, you know, saying, do landscaping, and frankly, on the pocket, pocket parks, I'm not quite sure how you're gonna do a pocket park yet. I'm willing to see that without grass in it. And if you do the zero scape pocket park, you have a dirt, and then you have an air pollution issue when the wind blows surrounding houses. So that's, that's yet to be solved. I'll let the engineering and the, and the, as we see landscape plans for those pockets, we'll figure that out. But, you know, that's gonna be a concern as well. So it affects everything, but I just don't, I don't want us to be out saying one thing and we're trying to do another, so. That's the reason for this.
The only thing that I would add, add to that for consideration is, is the fact that I believe, especially during the campaign, I noticed it, that the mayor could probably attest to that. If we turn around and we say, we don't want to have a landscaping plan, say, follow the, what the water district is doing and that, then you've got those in the community that say, why isn't the city doing that? Why isn't the turf taken out all the parks? Why isn't it taken off of Freedom Park? Why do we have turf? Why are we watering? Why are we this and that? And so if we're not gonna, if we're, we're gonna change this for the businesses and future businesses, we need to walk the walk as well. And, and so that's why I'm, I, I think that we should have a landscaping plan, and it can come, and it's either approved or it's not. And, you know, once it's approved, we have to be mindful, the owner can turn off the water. You know, if they, if they don't want to maintain it, or they don't want to, if they want to be conservative. But you also, the mayor represents the city and the GSA, and you will see this room full, right? And in this room, you will have those that say that the reports are bogus, and that we have plenty of water, and you'll have those that say that we don't. And, and so rather than get on a political side, you know, personally, I always like to say, we live in a desert. We have a limited resource. Be conservative. But I still don't want to live with concrete, asphalt, and dirt. Well, I'll take some colorful rock. So that's my opinion. Commissioners?
I read the water district ordinances, 98, 99, and 100. There are some variations, what we have on the city code and what they have, so legally which is right. So we may have to incorporate whatever changes they made recently into our code, I think.
We make them do both, so we cover it either way. We require that they meet both the water district, right now, the water district requirements and the city's requirements. So, so we get them either way. So if there is a, if there's a variation, they have to, you know, they have to deal with that. But if they're coming to the city at that point, they have to meet our requirements. So that would mean we'd look at the water district, primarily the water district we're looking at for what, plant selection and other issues, and then the water ordinance concerns, we use the city's ordinance on that. Because again, we're not the water district.
So if we're, if we're doing that right now?
Talk into your mic.
I'm sorry. If we're doing that, you said we're meeting both.
Yes. But what we're not doing is, we're not saying, please do a landscape plan and, and do plants. That's what we're not saying right now. When you ask for a landscape plan, you're asking them to put in plants. In fact, you're requiring that they put, well, at least they give you a landscape plan. It could be rocks.
That's right.
You know, that's possible. So I don't want to say that just requires plants, but I mean, it, it has that indication. It's just more, to me, it's more, you know, the image that you're presenting, so that's why we haven't done it. That's why we're coming back to you and saying, but maybe that is the image, maybe that's not a significant issue, that staff's just looking for direction.
And that's, that's the reason that we need to go over the, the general plan and that, because other commissions have actually said, you have to have a pocket park, or you have to have a sump park, or you have to have, you know, this is our landscaping ordinance. And so that's the reason to come back to it and say, hey, we need to maybe modify some of these things to be compliant with what the water district or the GSA is asking of us. Our engineer may have some, too, but I, I think until we modify it, we probably should have one, but.
I think there is a conflict of, not conflict of interest, I should say, there is a difference between what our ordinance is saying and what water district is saying. Water district says no turf in the front yard for new residential, but we don't say that here.
Correct.
And then the watering days are even numbers, three days and odd numbers, and we don't say that here.
Correct.
So I think those are things we need to modify in our ordinance.
Well, that's because ours was done in '09.
We can make a recommendation to council, but it's up to council to make, I'm sorry. We can make that recommendation, but it's up to council to change ordinances.
Yeah, so that's, if we make the recommendation or changes in the general plan, then it goes to the council for approval. But remember, our, our plan was done in '09.
Great.
And there's been some revisions along the way or changes, but anything that we would decide would then go to council, they would have the same discussion, say, we approve of the work that we do. We're supposed to do the heavy lifting and, and bring that into compliance. So I'd like to see that come back to us.
But to answer your question, we would, we would ask that they, they don't do turf in the front yard, and they, they meet the water district. As long as they're not conflicting, exactly convicting, we'd ask for the, the worst of both. In other words, whichever one's more, more restrictive, we'd ask for, or look for currently.
Okay, so you want to keep the landscaping plan and have it come back, so we can make the appropriate amendments next month in the general plan, have a general plan report, and, and the things that we need to maybe modify and send up to the city council? I'm sorry, I'm not speaking into my mic. Because you have a few items, too, don't you, Lauren?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's, that's what we do, and that way we can define it.
Sure.
And then send it to the city council, bring it into compliance. So that's our recommendation.
Okay, so we'll start.
Do we need to vote on it?
I don't believe you need, you need to do that, you just need to give me consensus of direction, and we have it in a minute, so.
So let's vote on it.
Staff will now start requiring landscape plans, that's, that's what we're saying. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. We can actually take this off the next agenda, that's kind of nice.
No, we want, well, that particular item, but we want to discuss it in, in the general plan.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the wishes of the commission, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to commissioner items and comments, committee reports. Did you attend any committee, Mr. Ferris?
Quality of life met, and prioritize the future agenda items, and economic development will meet on Thursday.
Thank you. Cecil?
I did not attend, I was in the lovely office of a dental chair.
You were in love? I'm just kidding.
I am a dentist chair.
Okay. Solomon?
Yeah, I did not attend city org, I was busy, so.
I did attend infrastructure committee, and we had a number of items from the city's sewer, sewer plant. And Mr. Culp is coming back with, or actually, Mr. Spears is coming back next month with a report, because we asked Kevin McCarthy's office to get involved on our contract with the Navy. If we're unsuccessful with that, recommendation is that we
Uh, if we're unsuccessful with that, recommendation is that we build the plant on our own, our own property. Um, we also discussed the triangle where the theater is, um, the, the property there, and trying to work out some sort of an assessment district for the property owners to use that parking lot, cause it's owned by the city. Um, we have since received a recommendation from uh, our council, city council, that we sell the property and, and not be in the business of having the property. Um, I'm not sure where that will end up going, cause there's conversations still going on with the, the landowners around it.
You're referring to legal counsel, not the city council, correct?
Yes, legal counsel, excuse me, for clarification. Um, Mr. Culp?
Uh, pavement management study, sewer report, and the grading ordinance.
And the grading ordinance. So we had a pretty heavy schedule. Uh, there were some recommendations made, and we actually are waiting for a report on some of those coming back next month, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I think some of them have some specific uh, direction for options on our paving, and so, the, the concern overall is being able to maintain our streets in a, in a condition with the limited funds that we have. Uh, on our report, we showed that we needed five million dollars for the first three years and two and a half million dollars for every year after. Okay, and that's to maintain at a current level, and our current level is about fifty-six percent, correct?
Fifty-four is our average PCI.
Fifty-four percent. Now, for the, for the commission, and maybe for those that might be listening, it's important to understand that measure V between our co-pay and what we can put onto the streets is about a million and a half dollars. And actually, which will go into the street, if we get grants, we have to have co-pay. And then we have a certain amount that goes in, so that's what's projected that we can put in. And that's what we need to maintain at current level, and we're gonna fall short. So we threw out some recommendations, some information is being gathered to come back to our committee. So, a lot to think about there, isn't there? Okay, Commissioner comments? Mr. Ferris?
Nothing.
Yeah, tonight was uh, a little different. I, I think it was, I think we did the right thing as a commission, because the people really, in dealing with the uh, carport, um, they didn't do anything wrong in, as far as getting their approval, so I, I think we did the right thing as a commission. It was kinda tough getting that second though, while they missed the chair.
I, look, I, you know, get a taste of the city council. You're not gonna please everybody all the time, and there are gonna be some hard decisions. The only reason I recommended that it has to come down is that's the only concession that I could give to them, and, and I think it was appropriate for Mr. Culp to, to say, this needs to be recorded, and we need to have verification that it's recorded, uh, so that they don't have to live with it forever. And, and if they wanna move it to another location, they can, cause it will disassemble. But there are gonna be some hard choices. We're not gonna have some of these where it's just easy. We're gonna have some feelings to where they are upset at us, and that's what the city council faces all the time. So, I'm glad we had this experience. Yeah? Jessica, now wait. So, and we've had some in the past, if you remember, um, recommendation of letters to uh, the planning commission for the county, um, you know, on, on water, on other issues.
They were not tough though.
What's that?
They were not tough ones. They were easy ones.
So, so I think it's important to know that, yeah, we're gonna have some tough ones that'll make, make different, and you're gonna be put on the spot. It doesn't mean you have to vote yes. You're okay, it's okay to vote no. If it's just completely wrong in your eye, vote no. Um, because I make a recommendation, or you make a recommendation, or a motion, uh, any of you, and this is part of the learning process, you don't have to go along with it.
I agree with you. I've already.
And, and that's, and that's what I want. Um, so, if I'm giving information, or staff is giving information, and, and you've exhausted your questions, and you formulate it in your mind, and if I uh, put out a motion, or one of the, any of the one of, of you, uh, put out a motion, if I disagree with it, I'll say no. And, and that's what you should do. So, I, I appreciate your work here tonight. Uh, Solomon?
I was going to say the same thing though, so it was a tough session for me. I mean, because neither of them are at fault, so for fault, something occurred at building department, they are being penalized either side, so, so that was a real, I was going to apologize to the neighbor for the fault done by the building department, but I forgot to do that.
Well, you just did. Although I don't know if they'll hear that, and so good for you. Um, Commissioner comment for me is to make sure that, and, and we've already addressed bringing back our general plan. Also, thank staff for staying late, and Jessica for reporting it. I'm, I'm thankful for the participation of the public on both sides, that they were willing to come and express their views. And thankful for staff to, to make sure that procedurally, that we're going down where we need to be, and, and the hard work that, that is done there. Uh, so, future agenda items, we've already addressed the, the general plan, we've also addressed uh, bringing back that tentative track map for the, I think it's seventy-four units. Uh, some of the things that you wanna consider on that too, and, and Mr. Parsons is, has uh, uh, said that they would be willing to send a letter, and we can address it when we bring it back as conditions, is we had members of the community that stood up here and asked us to recommend that single story be next to the existing structures that are there. And, okay, so if you have, if you have homes here, and you have this first set of lots that nothing but single story is there, then across the street, you can do a two-story to not obstruct the view. There's just things like that that we, we need to address, and we addressed them in there, but they're ambiguous, and that's the reason to bring it back. Are there any other future items that, that the commission would request other than those two that? Okay, so I think that that's the two items that, that I had, and we've addressed everything else. Um, so, at, at that time, anything from the staff?
Yes, just a couple of things. First of all, in the general plan, that you need to recognize, it's a very long document, it has multiple elements in it, so we probably will need to apply, look at the general plan by element, so I'd like to have us consider one element, uh, at least until we complete that, and then move on to the next element. Uh, so, if you like, you have a preference on elements we can start with, or would you like us just, the staff to pull out an element, and we start looking at one versus the other? So you have an element in particular you'd like to start with?
I, I think for me, the recommendation would be is, look at what we have done in the last year, and, and what has been, had to be modified, what hasn't had to be modified, and, and look at that. So whether it's landscaping, um, whether it's, um, Lauren has a couple of issues from the engineering side, I think that we have a handful of things that we probably ought to address than actually take a full element.
So you're not intending to, to, to go through the entire general plan?
No.
What you're actually suggesting is you're just gonna target areas that you have some questions or concerns about?
That's right. Staff, staff has to work with this every day, and that's my recommendation. And so, when they run into a roadblock, or they run into a situation where it doesn't work in the, for the developer, it doesn't work for a person or a contractor, and it's just constantly beating their heads, uh, we've addressed a couple of those things in, in infrastructure committee, and, and worked on a resolution to send to the city council just from the infrastructure committee. So if we're gonna make changes and recommend them up, there are things that they face on a daily basis, so that, so that, like Mr. Parsons says he wants direction, we wanna make that job easier for them, rather than keep hitting that wall and going, well, the general plan says this. So those are the issues that I would like to see come back, rather than, than hit the entire book.
And that is the primary function of this commission.
That's correct.
The general plan and manage that. So, so certainly the staff will help you in any way we can on that, and make that happen. There is a process as we go through to modify the general plan, because it's a state, you know, it goes up to this department of state, uh, the state community development department for approval and review, so we will probably have some procedural process, but that's fine, we can take care of that. We just wanna make sure that we, that the plan was written in oh-nine, and water wasn't, for example, an issue that much in oh-nine. Um, we had different assumptions made during that time in terms of growth, planning, and, in terms of siting, so it's certainly reasonable to consider modifications to the general plan uh, on an annual basis. We don't wanna be doing it four, five, six times a year, but we can certainly look at what we've run into and, and make that modification. Um, it's a, um, it's a key document in the process we deal with, so that's, I'm sure we can do the best job. In terms of the other thing is that the staff, again, appreciate, again, I wanna appreciate the, the help that I, I get from the chairman and from all of you, and certainly as we go forward with general plan, with these agendas and so on, you know, we, we want your input, I wanna have as much as we can before we have the meeting if possible, so that we can, um, you know, solve as many of the issues as we can. And certainly, um, we, I appreciate the, again, the staff time in getting this done. Uh, we are, from a, a standpoint of the developers, again, my goal has been, and I think we're starting to see the effects of condensing the process time, we had that one exception we're working on, it's a, it's a unique project, but um, trying to get this down to where we, we can honestly say to a developer, you come into city, you supply the information we need, you supply it properly, we're gonna get this thing done and out the door to you in terms of your approval, perhaps conditioned, a lot of conditions perhaps, but you're gonna get this out in a, you know, in a relatively short sixty-day timeframe, or whatever we can end up trying to develop as we go along, rather than saying it'll take us six to eight months to get a project through the, through this process. So, that's, that's the objective of staff. Sometimes that causes issues, because sometimes the staff is pushing an issue to you, perhaps earlier than everything is solved and, and nailed down, but I think it's important that you give them the comments here, they get it done, we can say to developer, it came, you got your continuance, if needs be, to get your stuff done, but you know what the planning commission wants from you, and you can get it just to what's gonna happen, so that we can get this, you know, next meeting we can get it solved. If we, if staff continues to play with it back and forth, and then we bring it to you, and you have conditions and issues, then it just extends this process. So, again, that, that, I just, you know, and if that's not something this planning commission wants to do, is to be more service to the developers and I, and our builders, and I, I'd like to know that, while still providing the regulatory control and the necessities to meet the needs of the community in terms of the standards we have in the general plan and so on. That doesn't mean we change the conditions, it just simply means we try to condense the process. So, that's, that's the objective, and I continue to try to do that with you, all help that we can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so for a training, just real quick, that's been provided, and it's for your information, commissioners may ask questions of staff or the public for clarification on any matter. Make a request of the staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the commission at a later meeting concerning a matter. In addition, the commissioners may direct the city staff to place an item of business on future agendas. So when we come down on future agendas, if there's things uh, that you're concerned about, we can talk about it. So, at some point, we need to talk about animal control. But we need direction from the council, and, and uh, so, I only say that out loud, um, before we could ever address that. So before we adjourn, um, Madam Mayor has, has graciously said that she would close with prayer. I, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just making, making sure your heart's beating before I close the meeting.
We really would like the mayor to come again, so maybe we don't wanna do that.
She knows, I just teased her, so, listen, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for your service. Lauren, did you have something?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that I'm on.
I don't think you want, there you go.
There you go. Uh, on, on, I'm required to give reports occasionally on uh, public works projects, and uh, just wanted to know if you wanted a rundown tonight, or if you'd like to defer that to the next meeting.
No, yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I'll do this very quickly. Uh, we have a CDBG project for ADA ramps, about fifteen ramps. We're gonna award that project to Dave's Backhoe this coming April fifth. Uh, we have a CDBG senior center design project that's been awarded. Uh, we'll be starting to design on the improvements to the senior center. Our sewer project is about complete. Uh, we're anticipating paving on April tenth. Uh, we do have a pre-paving meeting this coming Thursday. Uh, there's been several uh, complications or delays to the project due to conflict and utilities, and there will be some change orders that will be brought forward to the planning, or to, I'm sorry, to city council this coming April fifth. Um, we also have a CDBG project for ADA ramps along Ridgecrest Boulevard. Uh, we are in design currently, and we're currently looking at the sixty percent complete plans right now. Uh, staff is also preparing plans and specifications for the security fencing for the police department. Uh, at the bid date, we're gonna advertise for bids uh, April fourth, and bid opening on, I believe it's the thirteenth, we are gonna open bids on that. Um, we have awarded a, a design contract for South Sunland, that's between Dolphin and Bowman Road. Uh, we've also awarded a design project for the uh, east side of Down Street, and that's between Upjohn and Ridgecrest Boulevard. Our signal synchronization project is coming to an end. We're working uh, right now to define the workstation uh, hardware for the, for the synchronization project. Uh, Tractor Supply has successfully done their, all of their handicap ramps around their project. Uh, the Bowman Signal Project, we've got a handicap ramp on the corner of Bowman and China Lake that we have to complete yet, and Griffith is gonna be coming back, remobilizing to take care of that ramp for us. And uh, this week, we'll be seeing some video of storm drains on, a video inspection of storm drains on Balsam and French. We have some old corrugated metal pipe there that we've recently discovered a, a failure in that, right by the uh, new Harbor Freight driveway, and so we're gonna do an investigation of that corrugated metal pipe, see what kinda condition we're in. And uh, that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
If there's nothing else, commissioners, then I will call this meeting to close at seven forty-nine. Thank you.